Was. Good morning, morning. We'll get to the big thing first here. Engineer's service. So we got the. Budget program and I gave you guys a new map. The map really didn't change much. I kind of cleaned it up a little bit so you could actually. See the highlighted projects and the project numbers in the year that going to be accomplished. The dollar amounts aren't on there, but they're on the. The the program anyway associated with that. You can see the scattering of projects. We've got planned now like I think if number two last week. Their plan doesn't mean we have the money for all of this stuff. It was partly a wish list. So on the budget side of things. I put the budget together with a pending approval or amendment for fiscal twenty two. Yeah, the reason I want to do amendment twenty two. There's because of more greater options that we have those use ones. We only had a hundred thousand dollars in the twenty two budget for new equipment. I think the way the 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 budget's working out so far. We can amend this year's to six hundred thousand. And if I need to, I can drop next year. And I got five hundred thousand for next year's equipment too, but I can always adjust that a little bit if we see the need to lower it. I think the thing is is try to capture some of them these pieces of equipment before we don't have the opportunity anymore. So. What that does for us then is it still carries over the balances that we need. But what I've got programmed then for the budget is. A five hundred and twenty three thousand like care over at the end of the year for fiscal twenty three, which is a lot lower, but. I don't think that's going to be the actual number when it's all said and done because we're still running pretty decent here for. For the end of this year or where we're at. We've got seventy eight percent of the budget used. Seventy eight or seventy three percent of the budget used with. Half of April, May and June yet to go through. So we'll have a little bit more added to that dollar amount when we get done. So we'll see how that all carries over. I'm on the on the program side. I don't think the projects changed. I did. Changed some descriptions on things. I don't think dollar wise anything can change. I mean, the program. Start aside. And like I said, the the biggest thing is to worry about the the. We look at a lot of the stuff from a five year to help plan things, but. Bridge inspections change a lot of things. And so we look at fiscal twenty three and what we really have going on there. We've got a few bridge projects on there and. I guess, like I said last week, to defend and if that TIF money. Whether we tip for some of this bridge work and maybe some of this roadway work too, if that's even possible. So like I said last week. If the TIF doesn't work out, we won't do the projects we have unless we have enough money left over in the carryover for this year. To do some of those projects. So it's still a fluid program and budget. What we're looking at overall for the next five years, if you want to look at the very back page. Of the program, it summarizes what we're using for funding. The swap funding fiscal twenty three is going to be Thrush Avenue, the STP project that we had budgetary program three years ago with District Two Nyco. There's a half a million dollars in swap funds there and then another. One million, I think, foreign market funds. And then, yeah, it's another million in foreign market. And then I have three point seven local for twenty three, and that was whether or not we tipped for any roadway or bridge work. Three point seven is. And then federal aid is a four hundred thousand dollar bridge project that because it's an off system bridge, they cover a hundred percent. So you look through all this stuff. There's a summary of how much we plan to spend each year on construction. And it varies depending on how the programs, the projects fall in. Like I said, twenty four through twenty seven could change next year. Just depends on. Where the need is. Obviously, there's more need than there is money. So. That's the case everywhere. Any questions on what's.
More need than money.
There's, there's more projects than there is money, I guess. Yeah. So there's probably things on the map that don't show up because right now we're looking at priorities and then what's what needs to be done. At this point in time. That's what we're looking. So I guess if we want to look at the the budget one more time, we're looking at. Total receipts including carryover balances. Nine point four million for next year. Now that that there's always change because if you look at the averages of the other years, there's. You're running from six and a half to seven million dollars. So those numbers change based on whether we tip or but we won't tip. So. We're getting nine point four million in receipts and then expenditures eighty point eight million. So that gives us that carryover amount of five hundred thousand dollars. What what's nice is this year we 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 had to turn our salt bids in Friday for next year already. We haven't taken delivery of this year's salt yet. So we cut down the order from this year. So we'll have a little bit of savings there. Diesel fuel prices, don't know what those are going to do, obviously. So. It's all just crap shoot kind of, but some things we, some things I look at patterns. So some, some, some things are budgeted pretty close to where they will end up just based on. The average of the years past. So. So everything looks good though. Yeah, motion for approval. Program budget. Take a motion to approve your fiscal twenty two. Budget.
Approve the Q O P budget.
Second. Moving second. Further discussion. Very none. Mark, you want to sign these two dollars? Put them in my file. So we had. Obviously, we got a bunch of flooding last week. And I told the crew to do was. Lot of cornstalks. It's terrible out there. And what I told them to do was, for now anyway. Get the culverts all back up. I mean, there's places where we've got a quarter mile of stocks and ditch and we spend all the time on those. We want to get a color token in case of rains. So, and I don't know. You know FEMA and anything else yet. I know that we've been declared by the state, the state aid, but I don't know that it's going to, I doubt we'll probably get anything federal. So we'll just see what happens. But I want to. At least get some things opened up so that if we do get smaller amounts of rain, the main channels will run to the culverts. Everything else will. You know, find its way through or maybe it'll carry some of the smaller stocks downstream as long as it doesn't come to a big deal usually again. So that's what we're doing right now is just kind of. Opening culverts up as we can get things moving and. They'll throw whatever they can back in the fields until we know. So yeah, it seems like we're going to repeat a lot of distances to try to clean things up, but. You know, there's a lot of black dirt and ditches too. So. So anyway, that's what what we're doing right now. We're just trying to catch up with that. And then along with the flooding that we had, I did see a couple of places. One. Uh, the Jasper's over there on, I think it's DD. DD seventeen. Over there by Carpenter that that drip dish there has got a scour hole in the embankment. It's going to need to repair. And the biggest thing was. On Vine north of one oh five of North Patterson's there. That I think it's thirty six inch concrete busted right out. I said you guys a text picture of that last week. That was at the head just inundated that whole system there. So that's going to need some repair work. I don't know. John's here. Did you look at anything else that? That you see? I know it's going to need work, but it's ugly.
Yeah, I mean, even. Part of the driveway, hayway too. I mean.
Yeah, just RT intersection signs, half of it's in the ground and it's hanging out yet. So it's scoured a lot in that.
I mean, it cut right through the ditch bank. I mean. Be easier almost to put new cover through the whole main. But.
Is that, is that pipe that's you sent pictures of, is that in the right way or is it?
No, that's all, it's all drainage district along the bank. That's that concrete pipe that was blown out. That was, that's the, that's the east west run that runs to the intake that's in the ditch. There's an intake in the ditch. On Vine on the west side. And that was opened up taking water. I mean, there's a lot of cornstalks there, but that was probably, what would you say, fifty to a hundred feet off of there is where that bus broke it. I don't remember if that water, if there's a tea there that dumps into that bank, I'd have to go look back at the plans again. Somehow that water, well, no, we'll take the intake down and under it all. But somehow it. It came in hard and it just inundated that whole system.
So you tried to find a contractor then to get there.
Somebody have to get a contractor to replace that thirty six inch. And I know that's concrete pipe too, which is really surprising.
Yeah.
Well, it's covered off the top first and then just.
I think that's what happened because that would have been. The dirt pile from the bridge project. Where the culverts put in was there and I don't know also. Seeing ever really got established good because it's been drying last couple of years and once it started eating away. Man, it ate a lot away and.
Yeah. Wherever the rest of that pipe is.
Yeah, it's.
Little pipes just completely. I haven't been up that way that far north yet, but.
Yes, just gone. I mean.
That's a thirty six inch main.
Some of them actually broke.
It's broke and then it's just gone.
Yeah, good contract to wind up to get that fixed.
So some of that used to be a federal, that was a federal project too back in the day.
So, yeah, I don't know how that still works because it was a fifty year deal and supposedly it's been turned over.
It's been turned over what, two years ago maybe was it that?
I think so. So I mean, it's a drainage. Yeah. So.
And there might be more people filing stuff.
Yeah, I was gonna say there's probably going to be more stuff once the water comes out. Those are the two that I noticed just running around. Yeah, well, that one, John called that. I noticed one on Jasper's. That's. It's easy bitty compared to this. Yeah, there's a lot of dirt missing there.
Do you have a contractor that you think could come fairly quickly? You guys got any ideas?
My only hope is I'm hoping that Mike Peterson will be down for me. So. I just. Excavator for this type of work compared to back.
There's a, there's an option. I just, uh. I had called Elliot Evans on Friday night and asked if he could bury some stumps and trees. And he went down to Garner and picked up his big excavator. And that's a possibility. So yeah, never done any over that way, but he's.
I don't have any pop. I mean, they're kind of.
Anybody that could get there, I guess, because you're going to want that pack back down and.
Or we can get that tile flowing again and get all material.
Couple of weeks hopefully.
Do we have any material we can take decent stuff we can take back up there?
Cornstalks.
Loads of them.
So. All of maybe. Do you want me to look for contractors? Just. Plus, I'll rust a couple of few guys and see if they can look at.
Yeah, I just have Russ give a.
It may be easier to coordinate if Rust did it because.
So you could.
If he calls out and I call Danny Pop and you call somebody else and we're trying to, well, you know, if you don't mind or whatever.
Yeah, just. We'll just send a few phone calls out so they can come look at it.
But she was ready to jump and get it done, I guess.
It needs to get done. Yeah. So. Anything else? That's all I've got for this morning.
Do we, did we lose anything? I mean, that's the worst that we didn't get any bridges or anything that are.
Not that I could tell. So high yet, so I haven't got anything else.
But nothing obvious right now.
I think a lot of it. Seemed to be more of it was the. Culvert Crossing, some cornstalks, back and stuff like that. Yeah, we lost rock in the roads and things like that.
And says the farmers will build for the rock again.
Want some of the bill for the cornstalks.
Take it back, right?
Well, fence lines years ago were slow the cornerstone sound.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, there's one where, uh, where that one is. The north south where that driver was washed out. They've got the cattle crossing there and that fence. I bet there's at least four feet of cornstalks in that fence from it running down the fence stopped everything from going through the culvert. So there's four feet of, there's four feet. There's no dogs in there.
No way to burn it or anything for product. Long time.
Burn the top, not be it.
Yeah. The truck can blow.
Spread it out. Spreaders and just load them in the spreaders. You can't redistribute them again.
You can if you, depends on how much mud's in there because it's full mud and it's too heavy. It's time to go through the spreader. Let's think because just motor and start spreading their own.
I don't know. It's. That location, but that's just one location out of a hundred.
Right.
Yeah, there's a lot of that often.
The deal is form around it for years until it's. Next best. So. Right. Was there any drainage? Just claims.
Oh, yeah. And then there's.
Oh, good. So. We're making motion for the.
Second.
Second. Discussion. And then most.
Payroll eligibility verification. Cindy, how are you?
I'm well. How are you?
Good.
Yeah. You asked me here today to talk to you a little bit about your general assistance.
Yep.
That you had. So I don't know how familiar any or all of you are with community action. I know Mark is, but. You said maybe information about what exactly this position does and how you're assisting individuals in need in your county. And a lot of the services that are being provided in here are duplication of services that community action already provides. So our agents of covers nine counties. Where did I go? Conso, Hancock, Sarah Bordeaux, Mitchell, Butler, Floyd and Franklin. Those are the nine counties that we serve. And in looking at this, it looks like. Your requirement is to be individuals that are a hundred percent of the federal poverty guidelines. So any of those people that are a hundred percent should be receiving multiple services from us already. So heating assistance, the low income heating assistance program, well, heat program is one. Other programs that we have provided, we also now have water systems that goes with that. We have. Other assistance throughout the year that that not only can be applied for the heating assistance, but then they also. We have crisis which begins April first and runs to the end of September and that helps with their electricity as well. And it helps with them. Let me see, their past due, their disconnects. And we can go up to helping somebody at three thousand dollars right now with those funds. And then we also have a brace, which is money that we receive donations through the donoring register. And those embraces that starts at the end of November and runs through January. And that's for anything. Anybody can ask for assistance for that. They can be childcare, it can be beds, tires, somebody needs glasses, all different kinds of assistance that can be provided. And that right now, all of those programs go up to the two hundred percent poverty guidelines. So if you're there at a hundred percent, they should be receiving those services alone. And that's just a piece we have of our FADS program, which is state funded. And that's providing, it says right now it's individuals that have to be unfit. But that's not, that's going away in July. And so it's just providing assistance to individuals. It's a home visitation program. I'm helping them become self sustainable, finding employment if they don't have employment, getting them off of the welfare. That's one of the, that's that program. We have rental assistance. People can apply for rental assistance. And what we're doing was providing deposits and then rental assistance. But what we found is really what they needed is budgeting. And financial literacy. So that's, those are services that we provide. We have many different case managers on different levels. We have health services. We have famine planning. We have the WIC nutrition. So if they have young children. They're getting the nutrition supplement. We have Head Start and Head Start is at the hundred percent poverty level. So if any of those families have children that are three or. For the preschool and then we also have zero or three up in Manly, we have a the zero to three center based programming for those families. So a lot of the stuff that you're already providing in here is what we're doing. Couple of things that we specifically do, I noticed, is that you have funeral expenses in here. And so we do not have funding specifically for that. We do, as it says. Let's see here. Mostly it's a funeral assistance that we don't assist with. Medical services, you also have that assistance to be made for prescriptions. That's something we don't specifically do. But again, if they were in crisis, that would be something that they could help, that they could apply for. But it's really the funeral services is the only service that we're not providing. So.
So if we had the funds for that, could you administer that or is that some?
And we, we do. An example would be Mercy. They used to have a program specifically for low income for dental assistance and they had funding left over when they closed, when the community health center opened in Mason City. And so they had those donated funds and they sent it to us and we have earmarked specifically for Sarah Horder residents and for dental services. That if they can't afford dental services, we can contact the dentist and work with them to get them the services and pay that cost. We then keep all of the documentation so we know who it is that we're helping. You know, the ages of individuals, how much is spent on each person and we can provide that kind of documentation on a yearly basis. If that's what you're looking to do.
Because we just have a threshold and we pay up to two thousand dollars for a funeral. So that it would probably be working with my office to get a check.
Yeah, we, we definitely can do that. We can move it set it up into a different funding source. We know it was just earmarked for. Worth County and we can, we could very easily do that because we have the case managers already. That are already doing work and helping the families. And again, like I said, if you're, if they're coming to you, they should be receiving our services. They really should. I mean, that's the only way that we can help work to help these people get out of poverty is to look at. Reading all of those services because just one of those services isn't going to move the needle. But if we can provide all of that to a family and help them with budgeting and natural literacy, that's going to help them. To move themselves out of poverty. And you know, so many times you might have an individual that may say. Um, I don't need help with my, my utilities. I got that covered. But if we provide you help with your utilities, you can take that money you were going to spend on that and put it away. So if you're short on rent one month, you have that money in savings. Those are the kinds of things that we're trying to teach individuals and help them.
Oh, would there be any additional expenses for the county to have you guys take care of the extra?
For, for those few things? No, because our case managers are already doing the work. So we wouldn't be hiring a caseworker just for your county.
Right.
No, they're already out here. We have outreach worker assigned already to the county. So no, there would be nothing like that. It would just be funds that would be earmarked to be private to them for.
Sure. You know, we talked here. You got a few questions. I mean, you had a concern there and I know like we talked, we're probably never going to get that one on one like we had Sandy before.
Um, just, you know, Sandy dealt a lot with. When we were doing committals down there, working with the hospital with Judy Harms on speeding up the process and getting my guys in and out of there. Especially when we had issues, it's gotten a little bit better, but. And then dealing on the substance abuse side of the world. She dealt with us a lot hands on hand with finding a place for them to stay for a week or so and trying to get employment, I guess. That's where we used her a lot.
Yeah, I know. We would be able to assist someone with that, but not one on one. I mean, not in depth. I think what you're looking at, what she was doing, I, yeah.
Right.
I mean, that really wasn't in, in this agreement that you have.
Some of that stuff. I think you're probably pushed more to mental health.
Right.
Region because it does fall under those guidelines. I mean. Oh, if you're looking to get somebody committed or finding a place for them to go or stay, then that all should be. Going to mental health. I just know, you know, Sandy was kind of maybe the easier step at the time.
She dealt with the substance abuse where they dealt with the mental health. There's kind of a division there.
Just a little bit, but yeah.
So I mean, when you have someone that just has a substance abuse issue, that's when Sandy jumped in.
Right.
Because mental health doesn't.
Yeah. Because care connections didn't really deal. You're right, though. They're probably one in the same, but there was a division there. Who we were to contact.
So where did they normally, where'd she normally have? I was finding a place for them to go and then.
She had resources everywhere. I mean, hotels sometimes put them up for a week, try to get a job, get them established. We worked with them and we got one quick clear over in Lamar's Iowa that actually two over there in Lamar's that were doing really good. So I mean. If we got a court committal that she would work on with Judy Harms down at the hospital on getting us out of there quicker. But then getting them placement, especially if it's someone we dealt with all the time. So I mean, it varied. She has had a lot of resources everywhere.
So a lot of contacts. And just like I say, that, I don't know if we'd ever find anybody to replace that. Unfortunately. You know, the services are still there. It's just that she.
She was the one who guided it.
She was the guy.
She knew who to contact. And I understand that. I would say we would have some of that knowledge and it's not that we haven't helped in that capacity before. But I don't know that it would, if I know that it would not be to the extent that she did that work.
But hopefully through between the two, between mental health or any stuff, you know, that's. Should go to.
I'll take some, yeah. We're gonna be, we're gonna be a little bit of a learning.
Learning.
Spot again, but. It's, yeah, we don't have much of a choice, I don't think.
Well, I think we're already there because Sandy's gone.
Yeah, it's gone.
I mean, we do a lot of work like with Prairie Ridge and we've done work down in Mason with. Just escaped me. Bee Gees Clark.
Yes.
So the way, you know, we have done work with those entities, but. I'm, I'm not first enough to know what you all have available up in the area of West County.
Pretty much everything you just said.
I mean, yeah, we, we work with them exclusively, you know. So, yeah, but I mean, I, I know that she talked about nights and weekends and that she would be available and no, we would not.
Yeah, she just, she was on call. I mean, not, she wasn't probably in her job description. She just.
She loved what she did and she wanted to help people.
Truly had a passion.
Yeah.
I think you say.
Fortunately, a large portion of ours was nice weekend.
No, absolutely. I understand that. Yeah.
But I think for the most part. The services are always there. It's just getting the people to.
To the services.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, because we're even listed in, in your stuff here as a campaign agency. We're listed. So I don't know how much she made connection with us.
Just kind of did her own thing.
No. Sounds like she was really good at what she did. Yeah, I know she was a, she was on the board for ECI for handcuffs. So.
Well. Appreciate you coming up.
Not a problem. Yeah. So if that's something that you want to do, just let us know and we're very happy to help you out.
Awesome. We'll be in touch.
Great.
You will be here for us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. It's nine o'clock and Elizabeth there, so. It's nine o'clock and Elizabeth there, so. It was his in a way. Yeah.
Hey, any questions or concerns? We'll just go ahead and do all of you. The first page we're going to stop at in your book is page two. It's on right near company letterhead, it's independent auditor's report. This report just goes ahead and explains that the purpose of an audit is to find out whether or not the financial statements are fairly presented. The audit has nothing to do with finding fraud or errors or regularities. It's not designed to do so. The audit is designed to determine whether or not the financial statements are fairly presented. The audit is based on tests and samples. We don't look at every single transaction that goes through the county during the fiscal year. And then we're able to form our opinion based on the results of those tests. So for the fiscal year ended June 30th of 2021, we have issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which is what you want to hear. We have issued a clean opinion. Now, during the course of audit test work, we did find some errors and some misstatements. Proposed adjusted journal entries were made by the county to properly include those transactions in these financial statements. Very on page five, we have management discussion and analysis. And the following pages just kind of give a financial highlights for the fiscal year. They also talk about the components of this audit report. The county budgets on a cash basis of accounting, so we do show a budget to actual comparison. Also, the county is required to submit what's called the gap report to the department of management. That's on a modified accrual basis of accounting, so it has a sixty day accrual period. That particular set of financials does not include capital assets or any of the long term debt. Then the county also presents a third set of financial statements, which is on the full accrual. Basis of accounting and that does go ahead and include all of your capital assets and your debt. So. The following pages just go ahead and explain all of that. There's also some comparative information comparing fiscal twenty one to fiscal twenty. It also gives the county a chance to talk about the budget and what happened during fiscal twenty one. What did you do for amendments? Why did you have to amend the budget? It also gives the county a chance to talk about what were the thoughts and economic factors when they were budgeting for fiscal twenty two. The actual financial statements, let's start on page thirteen. Page thirteen is our statement of net position, which is similar to the balance sheet you would see in the private sector. This is a full accrual financial statement. Exhibit A and exhibit B are your full accrual. Like I said, exhibit A, statement of net position is similar to what you see for balance sheet. It includes a capital asset and the long term debt. And then exhibit B is what she would see for an income statement. The statement of activities goes ahead and it breaks it out into your governmental activities and then you also have your business type activities, which is your water district. So for this particular fiscal year, the county did see a net increase in net position of about three point five million dollars in total. Of that three point six is attributed to the governmental activities. And there's a little bit of a loss there on the business type activities, as you can see on page sixteen. In the column that is titled capital grants, contributions and restricted interest, there's about eight hundred thousand dollars of projects that went through your FM account down at the DOT. So that goes ahead and captures those infrastructure additions there. So, you know, of that three point five million dollar increase, there's about eight hundred thousand of that that is. Can be attributed to that. Also with all the COVID grant funding that the county has been receiving, you know, that's. Coming through there too. And now all of that is is spent during this festival year. The business type activities did see a loss. And I know, you know, one of the the non-irtip findings that we have again this year is that the rates have not been changed for your water and wastewater for the last several years. And that's something that needs to be looked at annually and your recurring costs to, you know, go ahead and maintain that system and operate that system. So, you know, part of that loss.
We're working on that. They were supposed to have that in for it.
Okay. Then exhibit C and exhibit E are your modified accrual financial statements and they mirror what is submitted to the department of management as your gap report. This has a sixty day accrual period. It doesn't include capital assets or debt. We do present several major funds. The general mental health, real services, secondary roads, highway one oh five trust and the wind farm tip funds. All calculate as major funds to be presented individually on the front of these financial statements. And then we have the non-major column. Those are all those smaller governmental funds that you have that are aggregated and presented in one column. And the detail for those non-major funds is presented in later in the back of the book. So exhibit, like I said, C and E are your modified accrual. Now exhibit D and F are the reconciliations on how you get from the modified accrual to the full accrual. So if anybody ever has any questions and wants to go through that, I'm happy to step you through it. But the statement is pretty. It just kind of goes ahead and steps you through. Exhibit GH and I, then it gives proprietary kind of financial statements. We present wastewater and water and then also your internal service fund, which is your group insurance. And that has been a very tricky thing to budget for. All of the counties that we are working with have had issues with the health insurance rates. Fluctuating so much in the last couple of years and not knowing what the claims are going to look like. And the claims seem to vary from year to year also. So for this year, and as you can see on page twenty nine, there was a net income. Of fifty five thousand, almost fifty six thousand dollars in your internal service fund, but there's not a lot of balance there. So. Yeah, that's something to keep an eye on. And again, it's been difficult because the health insurance rates have been all over the place. Exhibit J and exhibit K are in regards to your custodial funds. These are the funds where the county access the fiduciary agent, your, your cities, your schools, your townships, your assessor nine one one and emergency management. So. Exhibit J just goes ahead and gives you the snap. A snapshot of what it looks like at June thirtieth and then exhibit K gives you the activity of those particular funds during the fiscal year. So then we get to the notes to the financial statements, which start on page thirty three. And I'm gonna skip through the majority of them. They just go ahead and they explain the accounting policies and procedures. They give a lot of accounting definitions. There's also amortization schedules for your debt. There's a lot of information from the actuary. The county is required to report a liability for a net pension. If something were to happen and Ivers were dissolved, the actuary goes ahead and calculates those amounts for inclusion in financial statements and then gives us five pages of disclosures to kind of go with that. Same for the other system plan benefits on the county employs an actuary that calculates that for us and gives us several pages of actuarial information for that. On page fifty seven, I do want to address a couple of the notes. You do have a note in here about COVID. And not knowing the full extent of its graph on the county. And we also have a note about a prospective accounting change. The governmental accounting standing standards board has issued statement number eighty seven on leases and it's changing the definition of a lease and how it needs to be accounted for. So. We're going to be looking with Jackie to go ahead and implement that for next year, but those leased assets will be included on our capital asset listing and they'll also become part of your debt. And then we'll just have to have some different disclosures going along with that. So. We're hoping to get a spreadsheet put together that will make things a lot easier for her to go ahead and implement this next year. On page fifty eight, we have our cash basis, but sharing comparison schedule. The first column titled actual is the actual cash that moved in and out of the governmental funds during the fiscal year. The column that is titled less funds not required to be budgeted is your drainage. So anything that went through that drainage fund, because that's not budgetary, to get to your net. And then we also present the original budget and we present the final amended budget at the end of the year. And then we look for any variances and there are some significant variances there. With intergovernmental, you budget for your seed or grants, but you never are sure if they're actually going to come from the state of Iowa timely. The other significant variance there is capital projects and capital projects never progress the way you think they're going to. Mother nature either interferes or a lot of counties have had supply issues, being able to get the supplies to go ahead and proceed with capital projects. So even those variants, even though those variances are, you know, large, they're, they're able to be explained. Some of it is also, you know, how assets or how things are recorded coming in also to. So then the following pages behind that are some other required supplementary information in regards to the budget and then also with Ipers. We're sorry to go ahead and present. Information about the last seven years for the county proportion share. We're, we are retired to present the schedule of county contributions on page sixty two and sixty three that shows what the contribution side was up then for the past ten years. When you get to page sixty six, we get to the non-major governmental funds and these are the funds that are aggravated. They're presented as non-major in the front of the book. This gives you the detail for those. And then same with schedules three and four, the custodial funds, that just gives the detail, because they're aggregated, presented as one in the front. Schedule five on to page seventy four and seventy five. Again, some more supplementary information gives ten years of information on the details. And that gets us to page seventy six, which is on government company letterhead. And this is the end of kind of auditors report on internal control, the financial recording and on compliance and other matters. In addition to applying on whether or not the financial statements are fairly presented, we also do some code of Iowa compliance checks. And we also do some internal control test work. Again, this is based on tests and samples. We don't look at every single transaction that might have impacted the findings. So. The findings are based on the results of our test work. So then that goes ahead and leads you into the schedule of findings, which starts on page seventy eight. And the first one is an old friend is the segregation of duties finding. You're going to have it every year because every single article we issue. County does not have enough staff to totally segregate. The record keeping and the custody of the cash and it's possible that one person were handling a transaction from inception to completion. So because of that, we go ahead and we have to have this fighting in there. We do have internal control questionnaires that we have let the elected officials and department heads go through to go ahead and document how they're segregating. A big thing here with this too is cross training employees, making sure somebody else can do that job if somebody would quit or would become ill. Which COVID, I think, was kind of a crash course for a lot of our counties with that because. A lot of our smaller counties had one person in an office that knew how to do something and all of a sudden that person's out for two weeks, four weeks, six weeks, depending on their family and the COVID situation. So. You know, we encourage the cross training and swapping the duties every once in a while, you know, get a fresh set of eyes on it also. The second finding that we have is also in about ninety, some of the reports that we issue is the preparation of full disclosure financial statements finding. Because the county doesn't have a CPA on staff that is able to prepare the gap report and the full accrual financial statements, along with all of the footnote disclosures for external reporting. We assist with that. And so because we assist with that, we have several independence steps that we have to follow to make sure that our independence is not impaired. And then we also have to disclose that we had helped with the preparation of those financial statements. On page seventy nine, we have a financial reporting finding. And during the course of the audit, we did discover material amounts of accounts receivable and road use taxes that hadn't been properly recorded. With the road use taxes, it was just an error in the account line item that it went to, but because those monthly amounts are so large. It was a material on this statement. And so we did get a journal entry then to go ahead and move that into the proper line item. So that's okay. And with the accounts receivable, it's really important for your departments in July and August to be letting the treasurer's office know. What time period those receipts are for, if it was for something that happened in June or if it's something that happened July and August in this current. Because the treasurer's office isn't involved in the dated day transactions with every single department. So they're relying on good information from those departments to make sure that those receipts are getting accrued if they need to or are be just, you know, regular cash receipt if they don't. The next internal control finding we have then is in regards to the county conservation receipt deposit. There was a receipt that was made, there was a check that was made out to the Work County Conservation Board and ended up in the foundation account instead of the Work County Conservation. So. We've seen that a few, quite a few times in the last couple of years, if a county has a foundation. You know, that's a wonderful thing. They're there. They're doing really good work, but we just need to make sure that. The intent of the donor is being fulfilled. So if somebody's writing a check to Work County Conservation Board, that needs to be going through the treasurer's office that is counting money. Which is different than if it's worth kind of conservation foundation. So just making sure that there's a distinguished difference between the two and that the funds are going for what they're intended to be party that they're intended to be devoted to. When we get into page eighty one, and this is the required statutory reporting. So this is our code of Iowa compliance testing. The state auditor's office provides us with a guide every year and asks us to go ahead and test certain things every year. Some things we test every two or three years. Some things we just throw in for fun because we want to keep it interesting. So. Some things we just kind of look at hitting this. Again, this is based on tests and samples. We don't look at every single transaction that would have had an impact on this and then we report our findings accordingly. So the first statutory reporting finding we have is in regards to the budget. We did have an issue during the year with the debt service function, having more expenditures wanted them budgeted. And also there were a couple of departments that had gone over the amounts appropriated. So. The recommendation is for the departments to really keep an eye on that. I know Jackie's office prints out monthly department reports, so. The department has just need to keep a good eye on that and let her know when it needs to be budget time or budget amendment time. There is an opportunity to increase and decrease appropriations between budget amendments. As long as you don't go over within the service area. So you do have a little bit of wiggle room there if you need to make adjustments during the year. The second finding is in regards to questionable expenditures. And again, these are the ones that were found during test work. That's not saying that's everything that could have been questionable during the year. These are just the ones that my staff found during the course of their test work. Questionable expenditures is something that our state auditor, Rob Sand, has been very, very focused on. Public purpose and the documentation of public purpose and his interpretation of public purpose. There's been a little bit of a change there. It used to be the local boards and commissions were able to go ahead and determine what they felt was appropriate public purpose and adopt policies and procedures accordingly. Auditor Sand has a little bit narrower vision of what public purpose is. He has issued. I'm sure, I know you're unfamiliar with it because you had to deal with it, but his interpretation of contributions to the not-for-profit organizations and he did not feel that that was appropriate public purpose. Which I'm going to get to that too. He had issued that guidance in May of twenty twenty where he felt that those donations and contributions were no longer serving a public purpose because they were to a private entity. You know, my take on that was the budget for fiscal twenty one was approved in March of twenty twenty. He issued this guidance and interpretation in May of twenty twenty. So your organizations had already come and made their requests and had been approved. And then he didn't really provide any guidance on how to support these organizations. Until much, much later. And then ultimately it was decided that if you have a contract for services or a twenty eighty eight, these entities that, you know, that would, that would be okay. Because that interpretation and guidance was not timely. I didn't feel it was appropriate to put those as listed as questionable expenditures in the audit report. We are required to follow his rules and to report on them. And so I do have an audit communication letter that I'll leave with Jackie that details those out, but. I know the auditors got on this collectively. Basecamp was blowing up with all this. And so. You were able to go ahead and put those contracts and agreements in place, just not for fiscal twenty one. So. Like I said, to comply with his requirements, I have included in the audit communication letter, but I didn't feel it was appropriate to add it in audit report because it wasn't timely.
No, your letter disclosed the failing to his office and timely giving notice as to why you acted.
We, that is my interpretation, my decision. He provides the verbiage that he feels is appropriate to be included for the audit finding. But that's why I'm explaining this now. That's why we did things the way we did. There's other audit firms that went ahead and took his guidance as base value and added it in those findings in the report, but I just. I didn't feel that was timely. There was nothing the county could do about it. They'd already approved those budget requests. And so. We just made a decision as a firm that that wasn't something we're going to include in the.
So, I mean, the, the letter you're doing to Sand's office.
Oh, we had.
Dropping off, are you, are you disclosing to them the figures of their office that have impacted the county?
He knows. He knows. This has been a hot topic among my peers and colleagues as well, because we just don't feel that. The, the counties and the, the cities that are dealing with this weren't given the appropriate, you know, timing for everything. So. It's another topic that we're going to be, we have our training with the state auditor's office in May. And so that's on the agenda, things to discuss again. So. But yeah, this, both that fiscal twenty one and then going forward, he's going to continue to require a finding. So then at that point in time. We'll be testing to make sure that the counties have agreements or twenty eighty agreements in place with the entities that they're contributing to.
We have all ours in place for twenty twenty two. We do them last year.
There's just a few. Yeah. But I haven't given them any money.
Yeah. And as long as that agreement's in place before the money moves, then you're fine. Okay. So for questionable expenditures that were disclosed, we do have three and it varies. There's a sales tax paid. There's interest charged and there's food for conservation board meeting. And so again, you know, public purpose. Interest charges and wait, these don't have a. Interest charges and wait, these don't have a public purpose. You know, the county pays claims timely, so there's no reason for any bill to have an interest charge or a finance charge. Sales tax paid, that varies from county to county. Some counties have decided that it's too hard to chase the sales tax down. And they'll just go ahead and take it, they'll pay it as a business expense. Some counties will say absolutely not, we're not paying or reimbursing any sales tax. So there's whatever you end up feeling is appropriate, as long as you have a policy in place and document it then. That's accordingly. And then also there's food for conservation board meeting. So there wasn't a policy in place for that particular. On page eighty-two, we detail out the business transactions or the related party transactions. The code of Iowa has identified six thousand dollars as a threshold for potential conflict of interest for transactions between the county and a related party. We do have one that is of the six thousand dollar threshold, but because the employee does not participate in the acquisition of the services, there's no finding associated with that. We just go ahead and disclose those transactions for transparency. So and the other two parties that are listed there are under that six thousand dollar threshold. So no finding without, it's just a disclosure. Page eighty-three, we have a finding in regards to the board minutes. The, the board voted to close session on June seventh of twenty-twenty-one. The minutes record did not include the documentation of the vote of each member on the question of holding the closed session. This is something also that they have been hitting us really hard within our training, making sure that the minutes record everything because if it isn't in the minutes, it didn't happen. So just making sure that all of the boxes are checked when you're going into that closed session, making sure that it is a roll call vote in the minutes, say roll call vote and indicate the vote of each member. Also, when you're coming out of closed session, to make sure that you're documenting what action was taken or is, is being taken on what was discussed in the closed session. And if there isn't any action taken, the attorneys really wanted to say no action taken. A couple of our presenters in the past couple of years have had cases that go through where you know, the general public doesn't understand that you can't take action in closed session. That's not, you know, something that they, they realize, I guess. And so they have had a couple lawsuits because of that. And so they're really encouraging the minutes then to specifically say, no action taken on. Fighting number ten is in regards to the TIP. TIP obligations have to be certified before they can be paid with TIP funding. And so this is, has been a great area in the past. And there were a couple dispersments that we found during test work where they hadn't been certified on the annual certification, but yet the payments were being made out. So it's just making sure that those obligations are certified before you're paying anything out of that tip fund.
That won't ever be a problem again because we'll have certified debt before we have.
Yep. Before we have them. Yeah. On the urban renewal report, then on page eighty-four, the annual urban renewal report is something that the supervisors are required to approve. This is submitted to the department of management by December first of every year. And again, the minutes record didn't document that it had been approved. So if we can't find it in the minutes, we don't have documentation that it was approved. So just make sure that that's getting approved and going through your desk every year. Inner fund transfers. The inner fund transfer amount exceeded the amounts that were authorized by the board supervisor. So the recommendation is that the county should only be transferring amounts that are approved by the board. The special revenue new heaven TIP fund had a deficit fund balance. This is due to the inner fund loan and that's going to be that way until the chip is collected enough money to go ahead and pay that loan back. So this will be a finding. We've had it in the last couple of years since the inception of that inner fund loan. And that number will hopefully keep decreasing, but until the chip is collected enough to pay off that loan, we're going to have that finding. The code of ordinances, the code of Iowa requires the county to re-adopt a code of ordinances every five years. And so that's a fun project. So. But that's required then to, to happen every five years. So that just needs to happen soon. So that's what we have for the report findings. There also were several non-report findings. There were, we're talked about with the respective departments during the, the course of the audit. You know, I'll just kind of hit a couple of them here. Credit cards continue to be a huge thing that we are testing. Also, state auditor's office asked that we look into credit cards. Yes, we do need a detailed receipt of what you ate. I don't really care what you ate, but we have specific things that we're looking for when we're testing that. So, you know, making sure that if you're being reimbursed for me all, making sure you're getting that detailed receipt. Cancellation of invoices is another thing. And I know this really is not a fun job, but when the claims get paid, everything attached to that claim is supposed to be marked paid. Because there's always a chance that something could come unattached from that packet. So the claim invoices, everything should be making, should be getting stamped paid. Also, the subsidiary listing for the stamped warrants did not match the total on the bank rec. And this comes into this whole discussion of Tyler version ten software has been an issue for years. It is not getting any better. It is not, especially with the drainage. And that's a huge concern due to the amount of drainage that you have. Is huge. And it's very frustrating when you call down for support and the person on the other end does not know what a stamped warrant is or what drainage is. And it's not just your county having issues with this. It's all the counties that we deal with that have Tyler and have drainage are all in the same boat. They don't understand how stamp warrants work. They don't know how to help you when you call down and ask. And I don't know how many times poor Jackie had to try to run that report last year. You know, we have to treat stamp warrants differently than other warrants because they are debt. And so we need to know how much was issued during the year. We need to know how much was redeemed that during the year. And we can't get reports that tell us that that matched the general ledger. So. And that's an ongoing thing with Tyler. You know, they know they've got the problem, but they just don't seem to.
It's just, it's just an Iowa problem.
It is. And that's what, that's what they say. It's an Iowa thing because apparently other states do not do drainage. They don't do tax increment financing. And because Tyler has gotten so big and there's so many counties or so many states. And also our department of management, the forms that they use and the way that they call for reports, you know, it's different than the other departments of management in other states. So, you know, Tyler's having to deal with you know, thirty different, different formats, thirty different setups. And Iowa just doesn't seem to be a priority. They still understand why we need reports one a certain way. And it just, it's very frustrating because you guys have had this. It's before we were the auditing firm, you had this when you did the conversion. So and as we've seen more and more of our counties that have Tyler that had Eden and are now switching over to Tyler. They're having the same issues. We thought maybe it would be something, since you guys are one of the pilot counties, that, you know, as they went, it would get better and better. And it is not. So, you know, I don't know what the solution is. I don't. But it's very frustrating when the treasurer's office has to work that hard to balance every day. That shouldn't happen either. You know, they should be able to walk out of there at four o'clock in the afternoon and know that all the transactions are recorded, that they're in balance to the penny every day. It shouldn't be a problem. You know, counties that have other software. They don't have this problem. So Tyler needs to figure it out. So.
Because really there are many other options.
There are not. The other option that we deal with is solutions. And then we also, we also audit Sarah Porter County and they have their own in-house IT department. So that's really nice because we just asked them to write a report for us and, you know. Couple minutes later.
We're in also a two sitting right here.
He's not that kind of in-house. No, no.
The only problem with solutions though, Harris did vice.
I know they did. I know they did.
And most of their staff has quit.
But it's not going to change. There aren't going to be.
I am actually all for the state just taking it over. And that way all ninety-nine counties are on the same.
Same pitch.
Yes.
That'd be, that'd be too.
Be, and that way they're tied into legislative changes too. So when they do make changes to your BPTC and that, you know, all of this, that it's all coming from one place. But.
There's been discussions that I said about.
There has been, but it never goes. It needs to, yeah. But it's.
IDDA should be involved. And I would range district association, they should get involved with that.
But it's just very frustrating because like I said, it shouldn't be that hard for Jake and Amy to balance out every day. I mean, it should be to, and when you were on the Eden software, it was to the penny every night. You could walk out and you'd know that everything's recorded, everything's balanced, the cash is where it needs to be. You know, when you have a balancing problem, you know, you're not sure if cash moved and shouldn't have, or cash should have moved and didn't, or if everything got recorded. And that opens up to potential for errors and misappropriation and all that. And you don't want to go down that path. So you should have software that you're confident in, that you know that balances out every day. So. A couple of other things then that we found, time sheets. We encourage everybody to fill out time sheets regardless of if you're salaried elected officials. You know, hourly have to. We always say everybody should, just so you have documentation. Jack, you probably don't want to know the hours that you worked, especially at election time, but that, you know, payroll is a claim against the county. So it should have the same, you know, the same rules as a regular claim. And then it has to be, you know, approved as signed, whatever, to document the time that you worked. So, you know, that's something that we, we talk about a lot too. I do have the questionable donations. And again, I'll leave this letter with Jackie so you can take a look at it. But you do have quite a list of not-for-profit organizations that you do support. So, you know, just making sure that you get those agreements in place. Something also that several of the departments had approached my staff about while we were here for the audit is petty cash. Petty cash is a tool. It's something that can be abused very easily. The same requirements for documentation apply for petty cash. You know, if you're going to go ahead and go to the post office and buy stamps, you know, you need to get a receipt. And when that petty cash gets replenished, you should be turning in all the detailed receipts for that petty cash in order to get it replenished. Really, you know, we have found with our clients in the last, you know, five, 10 years, the need for petty cash has actually disappeared. Because, you know, they're using their personal cards and credit cards and being reimbursed, or they're using a county credit card to go ahead and make those purchases. Or, you know, in some cases, there are arrangements made with the vendors so that they know that, you know, they're on a charge account or something like that. So really, like I said, we've seen the need for petty cash diminish. I was kind of surprised to hear some of those requests, but ultimately is up to the board. You know, if you feel it's appropriate or not, if they can justify it. But again, like I said, I was kind of surprised to have those requests because we've seen offices getting rid of that. They just don't want the, they don't want the cash. They don't want the liability of having that cash in their office. You can lose some of the control over it. So. The other thing is the autonomous boards and making sure everybody's on the same page. And this is again, something we've seen across the board with a lot of our counties that we've been dealing with. It used to be, I'll use wages as an example. It used to be the union contracts and the compensation board kind of set the tone for wage increases during, during the year. And then everybody kind of went with that. So you have your compensa, your compensation board meeting. And so then they would kind of pass on with the public health. You know, conservation board, your nine-one-one, your assessors conference board, everybody was kind of on the same. That doesn't seem to be the case anymore. And at the end of the day, all of the dispersments are signed by Worth County. Jackie's name is at the bottom of every single check and warrant that goes out of here. And so communication between the boards has become so important in making sure everybody's on the same page. Especially with policies too, you know, credit card policies, meal reimbursement policies, you know, that type of thing as well. Because ultimately it is all one county. You don't work for the public health board. You don't work for the conference board. You work for Worth County. So you know, if you're members of those boards, just try to get everybody on the same page and keep it on the same page. It just makes for a happier work environment. Makes it a lot easier for the auditor's office who's going through and, you know, checking those disbursements. And, and doing that paper. So. Like I said, we've had that issue with several. You know, most of our counties, it seems like all the boards are on different pages right now, whether it's wages or policies or procedures or. It just doesn't seem like it's one county. And you guys aren't going to want to have that. Any other questions or concerns?
Other than that, are we doing okay?
Looking away. So it's been very challenging with all of the COVID stuff. It's been very challenging for everybody and with people being gone and managing the whole, do we let people work from home? Do we not? You know, that was something else that a lot of our boards that we dealt with were at opposite ends of the spectrums. You know, there's some, some people that can, and then you've got like your public health nurses, they can't work from home. You know, they, they have to be out in the public and, and to do their jobs. So it's just, it's been a crazy couple of years.
Plus a lot of us didn't have policy in effect. To handle those things too.
Yeah. And again, it comes down to, you know, it's one county.
Yeah.
And yeah, you do have different departments with different responsibilities and different jobs, but and you need to take that into account. But at the end of the day, it's Worth County. It's.
For all safety.
Yes.
Better.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Elizabeth. You're welcome. Any other, anything else I can help you with?
No.
Okay.
We'll be in touch.
All right. Do you need anything else?
Not right now.
Okay. You've got my phone number.
Yeah, I do. And your email. Yes, you do.
Thanks for everything.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah. So. Back up a little bit.
Yeah.
Whoever your ports.
I gotta pay.
Payroll. Payroll held for Kimberly Brown. Motion to bring payroll up.
I'm signing it.
Moving second. Question. Here now, all those papers say aye.
Aye.
All same time, motion carries. No reports, right?
No.
Any liquor signals? Okay, Mark. Commander. Last Monday, we had our safety committee meeting. Adjusted the issue of the updating the safety manual. Jim Moody from Safety Solutions had provided us one a while ago. And we went through there and through some of the stuff that he had was in there was, we felt probably more of a human or an HR department issues and policies. Remove those. I went through and converted some of the stuff over, talked about companies, converted that to county. In the wording stuff brought back and committee voted to forward it to the board supervisors for their consideration for adoption. And this will be things that we'll ongoing, continue to look at and whatever suggestions people think we need to add or subtract. Right. Yeah, we're looking at it, but. Some train, training on it, living doctrine of it. It's quite a bit more comprehensive than the current safety.
Yep.
That's just another step for better insurance rates.
Um, yes. As long as, as long as we continue to follow it all, all departments. You know, we tend to pick on second, probably a couple of departments sitting here where all the accidents happen, but it's all departments. It's when you're lifting a big book and, you know.
If you fall on the ice.
Or fall on ice. Processes, if it's, once it's adopted and stuff is, will be, will need to get an idea of how many copies of that we need. And basically Jim said anywhere that the employees gather, you'll need to have a copy of that available for them. And then we'll have to make sure we keep track of how many copies there are. And so when it's updated, we can get each copy updated. Keep a record of when it's updated. So that each copy is correct. Okay. So. We need a motion to accept the updated safety manual.
Adopt.
Adopt, yeah. Adopt the updated safety manual.
I need that motion.
Is there a second?
I will second.
It's been moved in seconds. Is there any further questions? Discussion? There are none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same time, motion won't care. Okay. Thank you.
Signed it?
Do I need to sign it?
Yes, there's a.
Two pages for you, not one on the next.
Jackie, on updating county ordinances, it used to be that NIA card would assist with that. Have we reached out to them?
I did, but I haven't. I haven't. Gone further with it. He says he's gone to the city, but not with counties.
Oh, okay.
I gotta talk to him more about it when I have time.
And I don't see the. And I don't see the, the numbers as far as what the county is giving from the court's office for. Finding assessed for county ordinances, you guys see that on a monthly basis?
Yeah, we see.
I have no idea how much it is.
We're seeing, I don't do a lot of trials, but. We approve them as they come in.
They're not specific looking for, it's just a total dollar. But that would give you an idea as to how many.
Yeah.
That's what I do. It was probably about two thousand two, two thousand three that we. Adopted all the state laws as town ordinances so that we could file. Everything as a county library.
There was a couple missed in there. Redoing them, it should capture them.
Well, that's separate from what they're talking about, so if you've got, if you've got, got some, let me know. Although that was more of a philosophical. We thought it was okay for passengers.
As fun as sharing.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Melissa, are you on there?
It's not the end of the month yet, the people service, so department.
Department has.
Well, I missed a week, so yeah, I'd be able to tell. Did you go over the cameras, what we're doing a little different, Mark, last week, so I wasn't.
Think I touched on, but yeah.
Joel and I were doing some talking after, and Jim, after seeing the ricotta. We had those cameras that were still on order down electronic engineering. Instead of paying that money and having two different systems, Joel put a hold on the electronic engineering, canceled that.
We canceled that.
And so we want, ricotta's coming in at ten o'clock today to look at our whole system, so we put a one system. It's something we talked about at the security meeting. Got direction to kind of go that way, so we are looking at something different, ricotta offers a lot more. It's pretty interesting technology, and that puts us all in the same boat, it is transferable over. If we would build a new facility, but instead of running Generac on part of it and running that on the two. Worth County Lake and out at Keenan's, then we'd be all on one page, so we do have them coming in, hopefully we'll have something present here in the next month on that. I do have a claim coming in, it's gonna be a little weird. We ended up having a high speed chase, my deputy spiked the right car and spiked the wrong car. I have talked Jackie and to Jeff on it. We're just gonna pay that through our claims, through our department by budget instead of turning it in, it was under five hundred. So you'll see that coming through, I just, if you see that, that's what it's about. The last thing I have is I am, I've lost two employees, two dispatchers. One went to another department and another one went to. It ran out of childcare, and so I'm down two. I also have Marilyn and with her family issues going on right now. She's gonna be very limited. So we are gonna be definitely hurting with a lot of new people over in the dispatch area, I'm down to three right now. We did hire one today, but it will take a minimum of a month, month and a half, and I am out. Aggressively looking for at least another one and a half people right now, because Jake Lee went back to the turkey farm full time. So up there is going to be a struggle. We're dealing with it, I had it dispatched last week, so. I said, do you have some officers if need be, can you? Not on the dispatch side. There's me, that's about it, we can help fill in on the jail side with one or two. But my other ones on the jail side are so new also, that they're not ready and certified. To go over on the dispatch, I'm down to right now three. I'm hoping to get one back, I've got one off on medical, she's gonna be off another four to six, that's a pure dispatcher. That'll help when we get her back, it's just getting through this next, I do have some apps in hand. That we're gonna be talking to, one is a prior employee that wants to come back that. We're going to have a sit down, she is also expecting, so. We get them for a little while, but then lose them, so I mean, we're dealing with what we can there, it's, it's gonna be tight. So that's where we're at on that. So Marilyn, I and Rick, then, and Jesse been having conversations over the last. We just need, if we get through the next month, May is gonna be the worst month. If we get through that and get a few more people trained, we'll be in okay shape, and I can't put two new ones on the same shift because. If they're not certified, they cannot run the state computers and that, you have to have at least one of the people on that shift certified, so. And. And, you know, my one that's leaving is gonna stay on part time with me. The other department head was being nice to me. So she'll stay on part time, I, I still wanna try and put another part timer on, just because we. It was very lucky, we had a floater built in, or we would have been in big problems right now. Our floater now is filling in full time dispatch, so. And it's not, I mean, pretty much every county around is hiring dispatch and officers, I'm hearing war stories from the school they went to last week. Only getting one or two apps and you're seeing. An officer that just left here went to one county, he's already jumped to another county, and we're seeing that pretty, pretty heavily where you're getting a lot of rotation going. So it, it's gonna be. Keeping staffs would be very, very difficult.
Any other department asks?
So our flight to this year, or twenty twenty two flight, the pictometry is done, it's finished, it's in the can, we're waiting for them to. To go through the Q and A process, and once I get the, the imagery and stuff available, then I'll start letting out the department heads know so they can go through and take a look. You know, pictometry has been a very good company for us. Good product, I, I've heard a few people unhappy this year or last year with, with some of the. Some of the imagery, but we'll, we'll see, thankfully Worth County is a pretty, pretty easy county to photograph. We don't have a lot of training. Yeah, yeah, that would have been.
Just last year. I was just looking at recently.
So we do pick up when they do flights in other counties around us, we do pick up some of those as well. Yep, so like if Sarah Rota flies, we get their imagery, plus we get some updates as well. We do have a clause in our contract that if we do suffer a kind of catastrophic event, they will come and fly that in force. But yeah, like I said, we'll, you know, we'll have that imagery up here pretty soon. Other than that, vulnerabilities are popping up like crazy over all software platforms. We're patching as fast as we can, so you're gonna see a lot of restarts, you're gonna see a lot of. Issues maybe popping up with some software, just because. You know, the manufact- software manufacturers are trying to patch as fast as they can, because we've seen all sorts of stuff coming out. But the current conflict.
Sometimes.
Not really, no, no, the firewall is getting hit, I think our traffic, as far as our block traffic goes, we're up. Five times what we were a couple of years ago, so.
See it on your emails too, maybe just, they're obvious, it's all get outs.
Hacking and ransomware is big business, so. They're getting good at, they're getting very good at. That's all good.
Stay one step ahead of them, will ya?
All right, supervisor, be quick.
I had. Partners for Children, basically went through the budget, the contract expenditures. One of the things that I want to bring to your attention is we have four thousand dollars out there for our summertime programs for the libraries. And Britt was the only one, Britt libraries, they wanted to take advantage of it, so they're gonna reach out again with the other fifteen hundred to see if. There was any county libraries that would like to have some money towards the summertime program that they could do, it kind of surprised me, only I've got one. One program was submitted.
So they reach out to the libraries directly?
Yep, they reach out to libraries directly, so what we're having the, are, we're having them reach out again to the libraries to see if. They're interested in this money that's left, fifteen hundred bucks for summer programs.
I know they love the libraries too.
Really surprised me, the Brit was, Brit went in, Brit came in with. A proposal for twenty five hundred, and we approved that because they were the only ones there, but there's still money out there, so. But yeah, they're gonna reach out again for that.
Could you send that to me?
What's that?
Do you have any information, or where can I go?
I'm sure that I could get it from Melissa.
Cause I'm on the library board here in Martha, so, and I don't remember us discussing. Well, she's on until August, so, but I don't remember us discussing that at all, or.
Melissa reached out to each library head. And if they didn't follow through and take it to the. Yeah. You wouldn't have heard of it.
Yeah.
What's that?
That's pretty poor, and it's terrible, really.
This one's free, I mean, cause I.
Winnebago and Work, but one library is the only one that reacted, so it kind of surprised us.
Well, and Morgan does money, I mean, she, she grabs every nickel and dime that she can, so. I'm, I'm surprised that she missed this one, so.
I'll get ahold of Melissa.
If you would.
So that's all I had with that, oh, other than with Partners for Children, it seems kind of funny. We have quite a bit of state funding and we're just not even coming close to spending any of it. You know, we've got a hundred fifty thousand in one of them, and they've spent thirty thousand for the year so far, and when three fourths of the year is over. And that's all from, we kind of, we kind of figured out that they're still doing the same funding they did before the pandemic. And that's how much it offset it, and how much it's not coming back, because a lot of them boil down to the fact of, it's like with turning leaf. They just can't get counselors, they're just not out there, no. You know, if they could get the counselors, they could do a lot better job and reach out to a lot more schools and stuff than what they're doing right now, so. The other one that I had was North Iowa Children's Alliance. There, we're still looking for a consumer board member, and it's a, any parent that wants to be on the thing, that has a child that's zero to five years old. So if you know of anybody that'd like to sit on that board. But you know, if you know of anybody that thinks they'd like to sit on that board, that would be great.
Is that an appointment that you guys have to do, or your board?
Our, no, we don't have anything. Yep, it'd be the same thing as what Shannon did, only she did it for the health.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so we are looking for.
Just somebody to step up and say, I do it.
Yep, to sit on the board. Uh, the only thing in that budget where, we've spent just about, we're on track to spend all the money there. We've spent, we're out of money as about a month or two ago on preschool scholarships. So I made a motion to take that higher for next year, because I think that anybody that wants money for a preschool kid. Is, should be at the top of the list. One of the things we don't get into too much here is, because the W C D A pays for all our three year olds, and the four year olds are free anyway. We don't run into a whole lot of it, so I still, but I still, I thought the budget, you know, Jackie made a. Reference to the fact of taking the budget from fifty seven to sixty thousand, and I was on top of that right now, so. We did decide to use Central Iowa Juvenile Detention Centers, our employer record, and we're still gonna use Servor County as our fiscal agent. That just about took care of that. Oh, and Mark Paul was in the area, and he asked me if we want to get together and sit down and talk, so I did that, so. But that's about it for me last week.
I just met with Jason Petersburg. He was, I just finalized a few things on that RFP, that's going out either today or tomorrow. And we'll see a copy of that with the timeline, but we're heading for. nineteenth or twentieth, I think, and then we'll look at it right after Memorial Day, but I'll give them just over a month to, to getting it figured out. Um, you may get some contact from companies regarding cybersecurity, because that is in there. On what you would require or be looking for if they had any questions. But we just figured we'd give you your info to make sure that wastewater facility stays. Basically want it off, off the network.
So last time I talked to Chris, none of the skate equipment or anything like that is attached to the internet, so we only have. One computer that's attached to the internet there for communication, and that machine does not interfere with anything in the facility.
Okay.
I've, I've got that email, so.
Okay, that's, then that's very important, because there was a water facility in Florida that got hacked, and. Luckily, the operators watched the computer as they took a chemical from one hundred parts per million to eleven thousand one hundred parts per million. And he watched it happen, otherwise if he wouldn't have been sitting there, it would have happened, and they could have potentially had a huge, huge. Chemical injection into the drinking water supply, so luckily our water supply is not even, we don't have any of that, we're old school enough, but wastewater. We could be sending stuff down the stream that we don't need to, and so, it's just part of the, part of it, they're going after everything, so.
Says it just came out with a new alert on another advanced threat actor that's going after skate app system, so. That was just this morning.
So anyways, you may be getting contact on that, just a little bit, Joel, but, that stuff will be coming out. Soon, so let's say. And then he'll, he'll take care of everything and then bring it to us and present it to us at a meeting. That's all I have.
And then our RFPs, their requirements for them to have with the rate adjustments and stuff.
Yeah, everything in there is, yes, the same, we just changed chemicals, changed numbers on that.
Yeah.
And yeah. But Jason and I are gonna pretty much just do a water rates on our own, so.
Okay. I did have a state committee, which we've already addressed, and also Transportation Policy Board, which Rich kind of discussed in some of his budgets. Swaps and. Good stuff, and I did attend the trails meeting Wednesday night, I guess. Tuesday, thank you.
Thursday.
Thursday, yeah, it's Thursday.
Cause I got tied up, I was gonna go to it in the last minute.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, so. Just a brief meeting, you know, Jason was there again, presented some of the proposals and some of the hurdles that would have taken to. You know, getting stuff along the river, D N R approvals and different things like that, still looking for the county to, you know. Be the owner of the trail, but it sounds like the cities are wanting to do all the maintenance, or you know, the general maintenance and things like that. For now, and I know they've been in contact with Jim, Jim wasn't able to make it either, so. For us to be the owner and, you know, and providing the liability and stuff, which you, you've looked into cost wise, so. I don't know if it's something they'll be coming to talk to us again about or not, but. They're still pursuing it pretty hard, there's some pretty good interest down in that area there. You know, chances, I know Sarah Rota County, I think, is working different directions with their trail system, they're always on top of it, they've got it, they always get all the. Grant money and stuff, you know, they didn't bring it up closer, and we'd have an opportunity some of that too, you know. It's just one of those things, so. That's all I had, so. Anything else needs to go on?
I have a question, did Tyler ever get back to you on their glitches in their programs?
Sure. So, I mean, this has been an ongoing conversation for years now, yeah, five, six years. Like Elizabeth said, all the counties have those issues. Uh, the same issues that we're having, so to speak, so, I mean. They, they always say they're gonna address them, I think, early.
Main issues down at the drainage side of it, screwing things up, or is it everything?
I'm talking more about the recorder.
Oh, gotcha.
No. Really haven't, we're not really having issues in my office with Tyler.
Not now.
Now.
Yeah, you had the February incident.
And that's what we, that was, that was not, not what. No, no, I mean Tyler, Tyler's got their problems with districts and the warrants and that kind of stuff, but they also. Tyler's got their problems with districts and the warrants and that kind of stuff, but they also were. The ones that did that program in the recorder's office.
So the US imaging, that's, that's a separate project. That is still ongoing. Last communication was, it was.
Supposed to be completed next month.
And that's a three, four year.
Supposed to be.
Supposed to be. I, I mean, you know, and, and you can point to COVID as, as not being our friend during this whole process.
Hasn't been a friend to anybody on anything.
No, it hasn't, it is, but you know, suppose, we're, we're at least seeing some traction from those folks. I, I think we're gonna hopefully put that project to better precision.
I'll second it.